Is not.
All right, so we can call this meeting to order and get started. Can we?
Let me get the program started. Hold on one second.
Excellent. I'm sure everyone's had a chance to read the minutes of our meeting, our last meeting.
Yes.
Excellent. Do I have a volunteer to lead us in the pledge, or shall we dispense with that as it's a Zoom meeting? Now, we got a flag. I see a flag right there behind Rich.
Absolutely. I shake every morning ice. Say good morning. Hi, Will. You ready?
Hang on just a minute. Let's let Jessica. You ready?
Yep, go ahead.
I'm not gonna stand, but we'll go.
Let's do a roll call. Let's do a roll call first, and then we'll get the, well, you can see who's here, right?
For the record, please.
Yep, Rich Ames.
Here.
Joe Benino, are you here? Can we, can you say anything, Joe? Can you hear us, Joe Benino? Joe Benino, he's there, but he can't hear us.
He can hear you. I just don't know if he can answer.
He has to move his.
Joe, can you hear me?
He's not hearing you.
You're Jessica?
Oh, there goes Swan.
Check on him.
And then Tiana, you're here and can hear us, right?
Correct.
And I'm here, Jessica. Let's get Joe on board.
Thank you.
How we getting Joe on board? Who's in charge of that?
Juan, I think, just walked in there.
Juan's working on it, yes.
I now have a telephone.
Kristen, Joe's in the waiting room.
Yeah, can you hear me?
There you are, Joe.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you now.
Okay, good. Now you can hear me. Great.
All right, so everybody's here. Rich, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation. Under God.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, next, thank you, Rich. Next item is approval of minute. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve them as written.
I move we approve the minutes.
Rich moves.
I will second that.
Joe seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, give me a thumbs up.
Thumbs up, for sure.
For, anybody opposed? Nobody left to oppose. The minutes are approved as written. So our next item on our agenda is oral communications. So this is a section of the meeting for any citizens that want to address the Commission on items that aren't on the agenda. To do so, do we even have any visitors? I see Riley and. No visitors?
No.
Very good.
Wants to say something.
Unless who?
Never mind.
Okay, we'll close oral communications, go to public hearing. Our, we have no continued public hearings. Our first new public hearing is Chris Farms' conditional use permit. And Riley, it looks like you are in charge of this one. Can you begin with the staff report?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, I'm gonna do a little screen share here, get my PowerPoint up. Ah, okay. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This item is the Chris Farms Cannabis Retail with On-Site Consumption and Non-Volatile Manufacturing Facility. Conditional use permit and minor use permit. Slated to go in at 2029 Broadway. Here we have 2029 Broadway over on the west portion of our lovely town. Zooming in at the corner of Broadway and Hawthorne. And here we can see its beautiful view from street view. A quick project description. The applicant is proposing a cannabis retail facility with onsite consumption, which requires a conditional use permit. They are also proposing a non-volatile cannabis manufacturing facility, 5,000 square feet or less, which requires a minor use permit. And let's see, the commercial cannabis licenses are being processed separately. So a quick summary of findings. The project is located in our service commercial district, in which cannabis retail is listed as a conditionally permitted use. And non-volatile cannabis manufacturing is a minor conditional use. The service commercial zone district is consistent with the underlying general commercial land use designation. And the proposed use is consistent with the general plan. Continuing, the project location is in accord with the objectives of the service commercial zone district, as documented in the staff report. And the project location and the conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity, as documented in the staff report. Furthermore, the use permits are discretionary actions subject to environmental review, in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act. However, the project qualifies for a Class 1 exemption from CEQA, which exempts the conversion and minor alteration of existing structures. The project will comply with the applicable provisions of the code. And let me run you through the recommended conditions of approval. You've probably seen these before. The first one calls for the operation to be licensed before going live. The second one calls, says to comply with onsite consumption policies, which we've attached in the staff report as attachment two. The third one calls for odor control. The fourth recommended condition of approval would say that you need to get police, fire, building approval. The fifth, fifth condition of approval calls out security measures. And the sixth one says that you need to get building and fire permits before going live. And then the seventh one mentions our standard inadvertent protocol for inadvertent discovery. And there you have it. Are there any questions?
Right, yeah, will you go back on the last page you had up, please?
Sure.
Let me, I was reading something. Okay, I want to discuss point five somewhere down the line, not necessarily right now, but.
Okay.
Did you finish your presentation?
Well, that was pretty much it. As, you know, you guys have seen a lot of this language before, so I didn't really drill it home too far. But if you'd like me to focus on number five, we could do that.
Do you have a question, Rich, for Riley on that?
I, I have a comment on, on the, on the project. I, I, I walked around down there and the neighbors are all in favor of, of the project, except the, the, the the business that, that does auto repair is robbed, and they leave their cars out overnight. People steal batteries out of them, they break the windows. There's a lot of damage goes to cars down there that in, in, in the adjacent buildings. And, and I'm just wondering where it says a security system shall be designed as a means of deterring and discouraging criminal activity at the property as long as any business is engaged in the proposed use. I was wondering if we could discuss maybe having an onsite security guard there all the time.
You know, I think we do have the applicant online, or he was gonna get on, he had mentioned, so he might be able to comment on that when we come to the public commentary.
Yeah, let's hold that to the public hearing, but the question for you, Riley, is, is it within our power to include that as a condition?
Right, right. That was my question. Thank you.
It would be within your power if it was for the specific cannabis use? If you're intending that they would be a security guard for the whole site? At this point in time? No.
Right, no, I, I, I get it. The conditions of approval, Riley, look very familiar to me. I cannot find them in my packet. Is there a reason for that?
They should be part of the resolution, which was attachment.
I have condition number one, no cannabis plant materials may be visible from the exterior of the property. Number two, prior to commencement of any demolition, remodeling, or construction, applicant will obtain all required building and fire department, fire permits, satisfy city of Eureka. Three, retail operations with onsite, onsite consumption will comply with all requirements contained in the onsite cannabis consumption policy, attachment number two.
Right.
So. It all looks like boilerplate. What I'm really concerned about, I just want to make sure that, you know, as we discuss it and, and act on it, that our we've written it correctly so that.
I, I think that everything will be in there. There might be a slight difference in the way it was conveyed in the staff report than it is in the slide, but I'm fairly positive that everything is covered.
Yep, all right, very good. Joe, Tiana, any questions from you for staff?
Well, my thing was, I saw in the report, there was like a plan for the interior of the, of the first floor. But it's a two-story building. Is there anything planned for the, for the second floor? We should look at?
Riley?
I don't believe there are words plans for the second floor unless, maybe there was a small portion of it that was going to be used for storage, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, okay. My next question was the, it, this plan calls for a drive-up window. Is that a first for our Eureka situation?
I believe that the drive-up window was tabled for now. I don't believe that's part of the project.
Okay, if it were to happen, there's a new stoplight there. It's kind of a busy corner. Would that trigger some kind of a traffic study or something like that?
Um, I don't know. Kristen, do you have a comment on that?
Depends on how many peak hour trips it would create. The engineering traffic division would make that determination.
Yeah, and we did circulate it for comments, and we didn't receive anything from them that would indicate, so.
So at, at this time, we're not approving a drive-up window.
That's correct.
Okay, even though it shows there on the map. Okay.
Tiana, any questions from you?
Well. Um, well, going into the, I just, for clarity, I just wanted to know, so educate me, please, staff. You know, just what's, what Rich was saying about security concerns on the property. If that was part of a conditional use that we feel deemed for this, would we have to apply that to every other future CUP for cannabis? Like within the city of Eureka, would it have to be consistent with other CUPs?
Kristen?
Does that make sense?
I'm thinking, so if I understand your question correctly, Commissioner Ariaga, you're asking if future use permits, you would have the opportunity to require security at that point in time?
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, you know, like in the sense of being fair to all applicants, you know, just like the threshold, like what are we allowed? What other stipulations? If we put a stipulation on this CUP, would we have to then impose those same stipulations for other applicants?
You mean in other locations?
Correct.
Not necessarily. That's part of the reason that we do a use permit is so that you can look at each, each location on a case-by-case basis and make a determination. Where I have the issue with requiring security for the whole site is at this point in time, the whole site is not being used for cannabis. However, the use permit covers the entire site, so the possibility exists that some other retail use is gonna go in there at some point in the future, they're not gonna have to come and get a use permit. So it's.
But it would be subject to the same condition, so if it's conditioned to have a security guard, then that would apply for the whole site as the site is used for this use.
Yes.
Correct?
If you can make the finding that the security guard is required for the cannabis use, then you could do it. We don't have a nexus to require it for the auto repair shop.
For example, if this site were close to, I don't know, say, a high school or a community college, where there were large numbers of people that might, you know, we might decide the traffic required some extra security to make sure that everything was, were handled correctly, you know, then that would be a specific factor for a specific site that might and, that might compel us to say, yes, we want that.
Correct.
Okay, good. Any other questions for staff about this particular project?
And I think the applicant may have just joined us.
Okay.
But I, I have a clarification on, on the drive-up.
The drive-up has been removed. Hi, everybody. This is Glenn from Chris Cannabis.
I know, but I'm talking right now, sir.
Well, hang on just a minute. So we're still in the portion of the meeting. It's a staff report. So thank you for joining us, Mr. Chris, I believe, but we'll have an opportunity to hear from you in a minute. Right now, Commissioner Ames has a question for staff about the drive-up. Go.
Uh, we, the, the drive-up has been withdrawn.
That is correct.
But wait, I've lost my train of thought now because I was interrupted. Well, I'll have to come back to it. There's another point to the drive-up.
And Riley, along those, that line, the plans we're looking are not what we're approving. We're, that's just for our information, correct? So if the plans have a drive-in, we're not approving the drive-in. It just gives us the general layout. Okay.
Yeah, after, after this process, then the applicant will submit building plans that will be approved or not approved.
Excellent. Any other questions from Commissioners for staff before we open our public hearing?
So, so if I understand this correctly, this is Joe, if they want to have a drive-up in the future, would they have to come back to our committee to approve that?
They would. It's not included in the project description for this application.
Okay, thank you, Kristen.
So, no, what'd you say, Christine? They would have to come back?
They would have to come back for a modification of the use permit because it's not included in the project description for this application.
Okay.
Right, okay.
Any other questions from Commissioners for staff? All right, so at this point, we'll open up a public hearing, and we appreciate you, Mr. Chris. I'm scrolling through. I don't see you.
It's actually Glenn Kaminsky is on.
Oh, Glenn Kaminsky. Hey, thank you for joining us. Thanks for being here. It's our custom to let the applicant speak first about the project, so we've got a three-minute timer. And go ahead, tell us anything you'd like to, to tell us about your project here.
Don't know that I'm much, have much to add. We're really looking forward to working in the city. We plan to really kind of beautify this property and bring something really special here to Eureka. We are looking forward to focusing heavily on the tourism appeal and curb appeal. We're looking forward to developing a slightly higher-end retail experience for cannabis as compared to what you may have seen elsewhere around the city and some of the other dispensaries. And we appreciate everyone being here to support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you open to a question?
I am.
Are, do you, would, do you have an interest in a drive-up operation down the road?
So, I mean, I'm not gonna say no to the potential to that. I think there was a drive-up window on this old building that's attached to the building. We're not taking that back section any longer. We're sticking inside the existing front building. And when we looked at it briefly, the design engineer was like, oh, man, there's a retail window. And for a brief moment, you know, there was the thought, you know, maybe we would do a drive-up, but state ordinance does not at this time allow for a drive-up. So, you know, if down the road, the, the state ordinance changes and the city ordinance changes, and, you know, the city, you know, would entertain the idea, I wouldn't close it out of the box. But at this time, we have no interest in actively pursuing a drive-up.
All right, anybody, any other Commissioners have a question for Mr. Kaminsky?
I do. This is Rich Ames. The other dispensary that I'm aware of, the one on Third and F Street, where they had a retail shop, and then they have a lounge next door. There's a, a, a security guard checking that the product is, is purchased at that dispensary and, and goes into the lounge. For instance, someone can't walk off the street and just get into that lounge. What, what are you doing to prevent that?
So, to be honest, I've been kicking this idea around in my head a lot, and I don't know that I want to exclude people who've made purchases from other dispensaries, if there's a way. You know, somebody went down the street and made a purchase at Humboldt's Premium, and four hours later, their friends called them and said, hey, we're going up the street to Chris Cannabis for the evening. You know, there, there, obviously, we can only allow the use of lawfully purchased products. If it comes to the point where we can only allow the consumption of products consumed on-premise at the time, then we will add staff to make sure that that happens. If in our operations manual down the road here shortly, EPD and us and you can all, you know, come up with, you know, if I can write an operations plan that I think meets everybody's safety and security concerns, that allows us to be a good neighbor to the other retail facilities and allow people to, to come to us with a cer, within a certain amount of time with a valid receipt. I would like to be able to do that, if, if, you know, if we can work that out.
Well, I, I like your response, but I think that your neighborhood is a bad neighborhood, and, you know, whatever you're going to do to beautify it up front, that, that, that's a great neighborhood down there for homeless and theft. Again.
I'll go back to.
Rich, if, if I can, let's save that for the discussion. The, you know, the discussion portion of the meeting. Any other questions from the Commissioners for Mr., I keep wanting to call you Mr. Chris because I have Dean Crisp as the applicant in my file.
Dean, Dean is the boss.
Yeah, any other questions from Mr. Kaminsky? Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky, for coming in and joining us. We'll close the public hearing. I don't think, Kristen, I don't think there's any other citizens that'd like to speak on this issue, is it correct?
We have nobody else in the waiting room or on the list.
Okay, so let's return this item to the Commission for discussion, a motion and a vote. And so, Rich, would you like to, you were just kind of sharing some thoughts there. Would you like to share those now and maybe propose?
Yes.
A motion?
I don't know about a motion, but I want to share some thoughts. I, I'm not comfortable with the illustration of someone has bought the, the product down the road and, and let's get together, we're good, good friends, and let's go over here and, 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 and smoke the product in, in, in just the product i- i- in this building, because that that you just have to have some way to stop the people just walking off the street from coming in there. It, it becomes a flop house then. I, I'm, I'm really concerned. I wish you could see what I'm pointing, with, had a pointer. I'm concerned about the people walking from the orange to the yellow to the light green, if that makes any sense to you, from the orange to the yellow to the light green.
Sure.
How are you gonna keep the people from the street? Walking.
I can answer that for you.
Yeah.
If, if you're able to afford me the one moment.
It's not, not quite yet, Mr. Kaminsky. First of all, I want to figure out from Riley or one of our staff, where is the legal, what are the legal parameters of this discussion? Go ahead, Swan.
So, there's two things I'd like to point out to the Commission. Number one, separate from our cannabis code or use permit, every cannabis business has to go through our commercial cannabis license process. And through that process, they are complying with four pages of security requirements that go in detail about the security cameras that are required, how long that video footage is kept, the quality of the footage. This was security requirements developed by our police department. So, I, I don't know that necessarily the Commission, I, I just wanted you to be aware that there are additional security requirements that these businesses are dealing with that's separate from the planning commission and the use permit. I also want to point out that we are not allowing drive-up dispensing in Eureka. And we discussed that with Glenn and Mr. Crisp, and they submitted an updated plan that shows that as an employee entrance. And I think just the wrong set of plans was put into the presentation tonight, but there will not be a drive-up dispensary at this location.
Yep, very good. On the security requirement, does the law allow, for example, non-users to enter the use area to sit with friends while friends consume the cannabis they purchased? Swan, or Kristen, or Riley, who would like to answer that?
I think I'd have to go back and read the onsite consumption rules that were established. I think if someone is over the age of 21, we would allow them. It would just be like somebody going into a bar with a friend that's getting a drink.
That would be my understanding, too. So it would be difficult to police under any circumstances if a, a couple, a married couple went in, one, the husband bought some cannabis onsite, the wife joined him in the, you know, in the lounge to smoke, and the wife pulled out some cannabis that she had bought legally or illegally somewhere else. I would think that would be incredibly difficult to police. Staff? Am I correct?
I think you could probably make the analogy like Swan did to a bar, where, yes, if somebody came in and snuck in a little airplane bottle of alcohol, it would be hard to police that. That's correct. But also, I think there's going to be people on, staff on hand to handle any kind of, you know, thing, like, things that get out of line, similar to a bar.
Okay, all right, very good. Staff, any other thoughts or comments about this particular item?
Well, again, I'll, I'll refer to the, Swan, what is the name of the, 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 the place down on Third and F Street?
You're muted, Swan.
It's EcoCan, Red, Commissioner.
EcoCan? At EcoCan, you can't get in the, in, in the lounge without showing your, your purchase or, your, your purchase slip from next door. And I, I, I like this project. I have no, I, I just worried about street people coming in and ruining it for other people. And I, I just, I just, I just. And I, I just, I just, I just think we should have something that, that you, a- as the owners, you, you, you're policing who comes in there.
Rich, do we require them to have a security guard or is that something the business has taken upon itself?
They took it upon themselves when they came before us.
Yeah. Okay.
But gentlemen, I, I just want to remind people in any sort of cannabis business that when you, as, at a retail location or a consumption level, like you have to check an ID and check somebody in before they even get into the doors. So you're not going to have anybody off of the street that, you know, just can wander in. Like they have to go through a security checkpoint and a verification checkpoint to make sure, one, that they are legal, a valid age. And that they are two, you know, um, in your system. Any, uh, retail that you go into keeps a log of system of like, who comes in and who goes out. So you would have to put essentially like a new member in, even to let people into the business. So there are multiple checkpoints for cannabis businesses such as this to where random people just can't come in and out.
I, I am disinclined to put further burdens on business owners. I'm, I am inclined to let them take responsibility for running their business. Uh, Joe, do you have any thoughts on this particular topic?
Uh, well, actually, I, uh, thank you, Tiana, because I, I remembered from our first setting this whole thing up that there has to be a, uh, a doorman, uh, at all of these places. Uh, and you have to be in the state's computer system before they let you in. And, um, and, and you have to show your ID to, to prove that you are, uh, the person that you're saying you are, uh, for them to look up in the state system. So to Rich's point, I think, uh, most of the, uh, the, the homeless, uh, people down in that area uh, would be hesitant to, uh, have to show their ID and even be entered into the state system. Uh, for, you know, their own personal reasons. They wouldn't want that type of, uh, tracking to be done on them. So I, I think there, there really won't be too much of a problem with that, uh, at this location, even though it is uh, kind of right there on the front lines of, uh, of the, the situation down on Broadway.
And we have a motion to approve this project so that we can move forward with, uh, uh, amendments and discussion and a vote?
Who made the motion?
No one has. I'm asking if someone would like to.
No, I actually have a question.
Okay.
Maybe I missed it in reading it, but how many people maximum can go in at a, i- 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 in the room? And how long can they stay?
Riley?
Um, I would say the maximum number of people is probably designated by the fire department and the building code. Um, and I don't know that there is a limit on how long they can stay.
That would, that would be, uh, determined by the owner of the business, I presume.
Yeah, I just keep referring to third and F Street. That's where we got it really involved.
Okay. Any other questions or, um, would someone like to move? That we approve this so that we can move forward with discussions and amendments and stuff? Without a motion, it dies and we don't approve the conditional use permit.
No, I'll, I'll move, I'll move for it. Can you guys hear me okay? Sorry, I'm, all right. Um, yeah, so I would like to move that the planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Eureka approving a conditional use permit, CUP dash twenty dash zero zero six, allowing cannabis retail with offsite and or onsite consumption of cannabis in a minor use permit. MUP dash nineteen dash zero zero five, allowing non-violative cannabis manufacturing 5,000 square feet or less or manufacturing floor area, two zero two nine Broadway, APN zero zero three dash one eight three dash zero zero four.
Thank you. So that was Tiana Ariaga that moved. I, as the chair, will second it. So that just means it's on the floor. So now if any commissioner would like to propose changes or has questions or whatever, feel free. Anybody like to go first?
I second Tiana's motion.
I beat you to it, Rich. Sorry.
You always want to get your name in there.
That's right. Any, um, any proposed amendments, any further discussion, any questions?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Tiana's shaking her head no. Rich, any, you want to put a motion for a security guard? Are you still there, Rich?
Yeah.
Okay. Are, are we ready to vote on this or would anyone like to, um, propose some changes?
My questions were answered.
Okay. Well, with that, um, Riley, if we can get your screen share off. So that we can all see everyone. Um, so all those in favor of the motion as stated with no changes, give me a thumbs up. That's four. Anybody opposed? Thumbs down.
I need, I need something audible so that I can put it in the minutes, please.
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Four to nothing. Woo hoo. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations, Mr. Kaminsky. And then we will move on to the next item on our agenda, tree removal amendment. We can begin with a staff report. Uh, Ms. Kristen?
Yes. He's praying.
Thanks, Riley.
Thank you.
Can you see my screen okay?
No.
No.
I can see you.
Hi, hang on just a second. Let me see if I can fix this. Now can you see it?
No.
Nope. Tiana, it looked like you were taking a big swig of milk.
Yeah, no, it's a jug of water though, but being out in the hills, it's if I have a jug and I can drink through the whole thing, then I'm doing good. Otherwise, I don't drink any water and that's no bueno.
Now we can, Ms. Kristen. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Technical difficulties. So before you tonight is a rerun of the June 2020 zoning code update. Um, this is the tree removal amendment. And it's text amendment nineteen dash zero 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 two. This is the second modification to that text amendment. And it applies to the inland portion of the city, which is shown here in the colored parcels on the map. Tonight, we're recommending that you hold a public hearing and then adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve as proposed. So on June 20th, 2019, the zoning code, the new zoning code became effective. And as we've discussed before, we knew that we were going to have to do some cleanup amendments. And the first cleanup amendment was the June 2020 zoning code update. And everything except for the tree removal portion of it became effective on September 18th, 2020. The planning commission have recommended that council hold the tree removal portion over, um, for additional input. And, uh, we have done that. And so now it's coming back to you. The draft of the amendment was sent to Keep Eureka Beautiful, who reviewed it and provided a couple of recommendations back. Um, the first recommendation is that the diameter at breast height be changed from the three foot diameter that it is currently to a two foot diameter. Originally, staff had proposed that it be 16 inches. And so Keep Eureka Beautiful recommended that it be a little bit larger at, at two feet. Additionally, um, Keep Eureka Beautiful proposed five new tree types. Those tree types are shown in the draft of the, uh, ordinance that's included in your application packet, and they are highlighted in yellow so that you can see what those are. And again, all of those changes have been incorporated into the, the draft ordinance. And this tonight is actually the fourth public hearing that we've had, um, where the public would be able to provide com- uh, comments on the tree removal amendment. And none, there are no members of the public who have wanted to comment on it, except for Commissioner, uh, Benino did comment at the, uh, city council public hearing. So tonight, we're recommending that you adopt a resolution and recommend the city council adopt the proposed zoning code update for the tree removal. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Excellent. Any questions for, uh, Kristen from commissioners? All right, so sounds like we can close, uh, open up a public hearing. Any objections to opening a public hearing? All right, so we'll open up a public hearing for the public to comment on this. I don't think we have any members of the public here. Is that correct, Kristen?
Yeah, nobody who said they wanted to speak on this item.
Okay. Well, in that case, we've opened the public hearing. We will close the public hearing and, uh, bring the item back to the commission for, um, discussion, motion and a vote. The, first of all, staff, thank you for the hard work on this. Um, I, I know it's been a bit of a saga. Any, any other commissioner like to comment on their, their thoughts on, on this to get going?
Well, Jeff, I think everybody knows my situation here. Um, this is a very big change for all the residents. And I think the, uh, city is not being very transparent about notifying the public about this. Uh, they had an ad in the newspaper in one day in the middle of the week, uh, on the back page. Um, I, uh, don't think that's adequate notification. The city website is also not adequate. Uh, practically every resident in the city has a tree in their yard. And I think the fact that we had zero people, uh, come to comment this on four separate meetings, uh, means that, uh, the outreach was totally inadequate. Uh, I think every resident who has a tree in their yard, which is basically everybody in the city, should be notified by mail about this change. This is a change that's government overreach in its worst form. Okay? The, uh,
All right. Do you, do you have, do you see any redemptive, uh, value in it at all, Joe?
Uh, no, uh, the, uh, reduction to, uh, 24 inches is totally overreach. Uh, 24, there's hundreds of trees that are 24 inches, uh, that, uh, need to come down. The, uh, uh, the, um, uh, the idea that, uh, you can only be, a, a tree can only, uh, has, can't be taken out if it's 15 feet away from your building site. That's laughable because you can't get a tractor between, uh, foundation and a building site uh, in, with a 15 foot clearance. That's, uh, I mean, that's basically just not even across the room here. Um, it puts a lot of onerous and new and costly and unfair burdens on the residents. And, uh, deprives them of their property rights. Uh, were to have a tree taken down, uh, it's over 24 inches, you'd have to pay an arborist to say it's okay to take it down. In addition to the cost of taking it down, sometimes it costs you $4,000 to take a tree down now. So you can add another thousand to that to, to hire a professional, uh, registered forester. That's, that's just too much. Uh, also, the new language allows the city staff to demand the tree be replaced with a new tree as a condition of approval. That's ridiculous. A resident has a private property right to have no trees on their property. And if they want to clear them all off, that's their business. So long as they're under 36 inches at this time. Uh, that's why they call it property rights, uh, a replacement requirement. That's just tyranny. Um, also, the, uh, uh, new residents who buy a house here in Eureka. They buy, buy the house, they look at the trees, oh, I'm, I'm going to buy this house and take some of these trees down. Then all of a sudden they close escrow and they find out, oh, sorry, you can't take that tree down without going through a very costly process. And, uh, and making sure that it's approved. If they disapprove it, you're stuck with the tree. I think this is a, gonna make, uh, Eureka less competitive with other areas. Uh, outside Eureka for home sales. Uh, the staff report mentions that somehow greenhouse gases, uh, are involved here. Uh, I think actually, uh, this will actually be, do the opposite of helping against greenhouse gases. In a perverse way, this new restriction provides a disincentive to plant a tree in your property. The property owner knows that, you know, that they will not be able to cut down the tree later without the city staff giving them permission and having to have a forester talk about it. They'll not plant any trees at all. You're going to wind up with more greenhouse gas. So, or perversely, uh, they'll choose to plant a non, uh, native species tree that they don't have to worry about, uh, getting permission to clo- uh, to, uh, to cut down. And that makes another point, uh, five or six or seven of those trees on this list aren't even native to our area. Uh, that's, so that's, uh, not really, I don't know even sure why they're on the list. And, uh, finally, uh, in this time of financial hardship and, uh, retirees and seniors and low income people during this COVID thing, even considering raising the financial burden on someone to do something on their own private property is just ridiculous at this time. Um, and the staff report claims that this is not going to be detrimental to the public welfare. I think it is. Costing the people an extra five or six or seven or a thousand dollars to have a tree taken down. Uh, that's not good for their welfare. And the staff report also says it's not going to be inconvenient for the public. I think it's be very inconvenient for the public. So I do not think that at this time, uh, we should be entertaining this, uh, this ordinance. And, uh, and I'm, wouldn't be happy on, in any case, unless, uh, discussing it further, unless everybody in the city has mailed a letter. Or, or, uh, you know, and of course the staff's going to say, oh, we can't do that. It costs too much trouble. It's too much, too hard to do. Every month Burger King and McDonald's and Denny's send a, a, a letter to every single person in this city with coupons on it. You didn't mean to tell me that's difficult for them to get everybody's address? They send it out to everybody. I get one every single, every single, uh, month or every three weeks. So that's, that'd be simple for the city to do that. And if, you know, the city is insistent on putting this thing through, the only way I would vote for it would be that the new ordinance would grandfather in all the trees that are in the city right now. And this ordinance would only apply to a tree that's been planted after the ordinance goes into effect. So that's my feeling. And I know you guys, uh, think I'm getting a little hot about this, but I, it's, it's, this is just too much. Too much government, uh, power, too much government overreach.
I, I, Joe, agree with much of what you're saying, um, specifically on page 11, the new ordinance. And, and, uh, staff, I don't, I, I don't want to, I'm not criticizing your efforts in terms of putting a, a proposal together. I appreciate your hard work on that. And sometimes you put something together and the act of putting it together is what helps people see, eh, maybe I'm not in favor of this. Um, on page 11, the purpose, um, I mean, there's no purpose in there at all about private property rights. And Joe, I agree with you that private property rights should include a, a lot of sovereignty over the trees on your right, on your lot. Uh, the second sentence, much of Eureka is forested with stands of redwoods and other trees that are a distinctive part of the city's history and character, and every effort should be made to preserve and protect these trees while protecting the public safety and supporting residential development. My understanding, when, when that was in our general plan, was that, that was going to apply to public land, to city-owned property. To, um, you know, to, to trees that were in public rights of way. I had no idea that we were going to extend that onto, you know, ev- virtually every tree on, in the city. Every tree on private property. So, um, I mean, I, I could get behind this if that were added to the list. Um, you know, maybe, uh, we have one protect the, the, these regulations as I'm in paragraph A here. These regulations are intended to, one, protect and preserve trees that are important. that are important to the character of the city and its neighborhood; two, protect the public safety by allowing hazardous tree removal; three, allow for tree removal or tree mass reduction as necessary to allow for residential development; and supporting solar rays, comma, and protecting the right of property owners to enjoy their, their property, including, you know, their, the trees or lack of trees on there." Something in there about that. But, I mean, as it stands, and, I mean, there are some good things, I think, in here. I think the increase of the diameter to 24 inches is good. I might be convinced to go to three feet, to 36 inches. And my concern is there, within the city, if we have, you know, a standard city lot, there are trees that are large enough that it would be dangerous for a non-professional to try to bring the tree down. It would be dangerous to neighbor, neighboring properties, structures, folks driving by and walking on the sidewalk. And so I am in support of a, a threshold size above which a tree permit is required to make sure the taking down of the tree is done safely. 24 inches strikes me as a minimum. Larger could be, I could be convinced of that. But not, not for the purpose of prohibiting trees, you know, the, the, the list of protected tree species. There is no way I would vote for that many species. As Joe, as you mentioned, many of those aren't even natives. And, I mean, a lot of them are not natives. So, I mean, at this point, Tiana and Rich, I don't think Joe's gonna move to approve this. I'm not gonna move to approve it. So it takes you two to move and a second to even get it on the agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, we do need to have some action from you, whether that is a motion to approve or a motion to deny.
Sure.
Actually, it's not deny. It's to recommend denial to the city council.
Or a motion to table it, you know, till later date. So Rich and Tiana, are either of you interested in, in moving to approve it as it's written?
Tiana, go.
I'm just curious, um, 'cause I, I missed the city councils. The, what was the city council's thought on this?
So when the item was introduced to the city council, one of the council members expressed concern regarding the changes that were being proposed. When the item, and so we pulled it out of the ordinance when we took it back for adoption. However, that same council member mentioned at that meeting that they were now in favor of adopting the tree removal amendment as it had been proposed at that point in time. So that was, including the five less trees and including the 16-inch diameter instead of the 24-inch diameter.
The staff, I, I mean, I reiterate, I mean, the city council might be saying one thing, planning commission might be saying another. I know sometimes you guys might feel like you're getting caught in between. My, I, I don't have any critique about how the thing was written. Staff, I appreciate your guys' efforts to come up with the, you know, cohesive ordinance, but... Tiana, any other questions? Rich?
No, I, I thought that Joe's presentation was one of the best I've heard him do in the time I've been, we've been on the council. I thank you for your research you did and your strong feelings, Joe.
I, I do not want to recommend, me personally, I do not want to recommend denial to the city council. I think the city council has made it clear that they want some type of tree permitting ordinance. And I recognize the need for it, for, certainly for health and safety, you know, as I mentioned before. So I think what I'd like to propose is that we, we table this to a special workshop of the planning commission, where we can go through it on a less formal basis and really share what we feel like needs to be included and excluded. And I'm certainly open to including the city council with that.
Well, Jeff, I think you gotta understand that there already is, you do need a permit for a tree that's over three feet right now.
Correct.
That, that's not an issue as far as that goes. But what I'm at issue with is all the, you know, the fact that, first of all, they're gonna shrink down the size of the tree you need a permit for. And all this other stuff about, you know, you have to get permission because, to, to, you have to replace the tree, if, you know, because the city says you need to replace the tree, you've got to wind up having an arborist, you know, talk about the tree and pay a guy to do that. To me, that's just government overreach. And also, I just, I just don't see how the city council can take this up if the planning commission says no. I don't see how it then gets moved up to the city council.
Well, it, believe me, it, it will get moved up, it'll get moved up really quickly, Joe. And my, by, when, by staff, this is, so we're basically a subcommittee. Right, we're, we're a subcommittee of the, of the city council. And so if we recommend to them denying it, then it will go up to them with our recommendation to deny it. Will they listen to us? I have my doubts.
Well, my, my problem, Jeff, is, go ahead.
Well, I would rather, I would rather send them up something that is reasonable, that's an improvement over the old code, but is not as, nearly as intrusive as, as what we have in front of us.
Well, this isn't an improvement, and my problem is, why is staff taking things to the council if we've told staff, we don't want this? What are we here for, for the planning commission? I mean, that's, you know...
Because city, because city council has instructed them to. City council has instructed...
They haven't. They, I mean, that's the thing, they haven't. We're, we're just saying, kill it right now. Don't even bring it to the council.
Kristen, am I mistaken?
Mr. Chairman, the role of the planning commission when you're reviewing these text amendments and other types of amendments that we bring to you is that you make a recommendation to the city council as to whether or not it should be approved. You can propose to make modifications to it, as you did with the, with the rest of the zoning code update. I believe all of the modifications that you had, you had proposed, I think they were all adopted by the city council, so...
Yes, but all of the modifications we proposed, for example, to the cannabis ordinance, were not adopted by the city council. So the city council can accept our recommendations or not. So the question specifically is, has city council instructed staff to prepare an update to the tree permitting ordinance?
So this was part of the zoning code update. It's part of making amendments so that the zoning code works for staff, so it works for the public, so the public knows what's expected and required of them. There are no requirements right now for making findings. Or we have the ability to do conditions of approval, but they're not identified at this point in time. We don't have any regulations that allow the removal of a hazardous tree. If you're removing a hazardous tree that's three feet or more, you have to get a tree permit if it's on that list. This ordinance actually provides exemptions for that. If you are required to install solar on the new house that you're building and you have trees that are in the way and blocking your solar access, this ordinance provides an option for you to do removal or do trimming without needing a tree permit. Currently, there's no provisions in the code to allow trees that are larger than three feet diameter to be removed so you can build a house. This ordinance update provides that.
Yes, there are. You can get a permit for that. That's the whole thing. That's, that's, that's my point, is that you've already got something where if a tree's over three feet, you go and get a permit for it. And there's no, there shouldn't be any government interference with private property at all. And that's what, and the council didn't ask for this. Staff is asking for this. And we as, me as the planning commissioner are telling you, no, this is not necessary. And staff will not listen.
So what this ordinance does, if I can reiterate, is it allows you, without a permit, to remove a hazardous tree or to remove a tree that's, that's in your...
No, let, let, let Kristen talk.
Kristen, okay, all right.
Go ahead, Kristen.
So what I was just saying is that this ordinance allows you to remove a hazardous tree with an arborist's report, just like we had before the current zoning code update. This ordinance allows you to remove the trees without a permit that are in your building footprint and in your driveway going up to your building and within 15 feet of your building. So right now, if you need to remove six trees to build your house, you need a use permit.
So Joe's question is really more, Joe's question is really more about process, Kristen. If, if all, if three of the four planning commissioners tonight say, we really like the old code rather than the new code, what basis does staff have to take this proposal to the city council anyway over the planning commission's objection?
So your recommendation in that instance would be that council not adopt this amendment, but just retain the existing language?
Right, and so that would go before the city council, correct?
It would.
And what mechanism would it use to get there? Who would bring it before the city council?
Staff would take it to city council as introduction of an ordinance. I believe staff would still continue to recommend that the changes be made, but the staff report would talk about that the planning commission voted X to X to recommend that council not adopt this version and retain the current version.
Joe, do you have questions about that?
I would move that the planning commission reject this tree ordinance update in order to protect the private property rights of the residents of the city of Eureka. And that would be taken to the council in that way.
Is there a second for that motion?
A second.
So discussion on that motion. Tiana, you've been real quiet. Would you like to say anything?
You know, I, I'm in favor of, you know, things being more consistent with, you know, moving forward in progress for the city of Eureka. I understand, you know, several viewpoints of protecting private rights. Like, I, I totally align with that, you know. But what I do think that it, you know, I wish there's something in here that the language of, you know, can be changed in just a few places 'cause of the sense of not having to get a permit to clear some hazardous trees or having that, that right of passage, you know. I've, I've done building projects. I think, you know, if, for anyone who's been in that, the less permits you have to pull, the easier it is. You have more and more choice and fluidities on private property. So that's where I struggle. Like, if we move in a place where there's guidance, where you don't necessarily have to, you know, go through extenuating, you know, litigation that holds you off from putting a driveway in or completing a project for your house, I think that that's good, you know. Of course, I, I don't want to infringe on anybody's, like, private space or private property, you know. I, I struggle with that, but I, I think, like, there, instead of just rejecting it, isn't there, you know, a better way forward? And, and that's just my comment.
Yep, I agree with Tiana. I would, I would prefer to work with it. And I recognize the, the good points that Kristen brought up, and I prefer to work with it and try to get it chopped way down so that we can get the, the good stuff without the bad. But Rich, any thoughts?
No, I'm just really in favor of what Joe's saying. I'm, I'm very impressed. And, and I, I really believe, I mean, I agree with him where the transparency, I, I bet you, if you talk to people in Eureka, they don't even know what we're talking about. They have no ideas going on, and all of a sudden, they're, they can't do what they want on their own private property.
Yep.
And, and, and Rich, I think that Kristen's kinda dissembling here a little bit. Says right here under hazardous trees, emergencies. The removal of a tree can happen where a member of law enforcement, Humboldt Bay Fire District Public Works Director or the director of the planning commission, based on a report from a professional forester or an arborist, determines that the hazardous tree presents an imminent danger of collapse. That's, that's not a permit?
That's the new code.
That's the new code, and that's, that's ridiculous. That's just like getting a permit, and not only that, you gotta wait. The tree's leaning, it could be ready to fall on somebody. Oh, I have to go and consult with the fire, with the fire chief or with the, the planning director before, and, and also have the, the registered forester come over at a, you know, $500, $125 an hour to give a report to the fire chief. That's, that's the same thing as getting a permit, and that's even worse. And so the point is, it should say...
I read that differently, Joe. I read that to mean if you've got a tree that's threatening to fall over a roadway and a police officer comes out and says, that's a dangerous tree, you gotta take it down, that that's all you have to do. You don't have to get a permit. But we can ask that question, but Joe, I'm gonna have to insist that you not disparage staff. Staff is working the best they can to present an idea.
I understand, but Jeff, staff, I, we, I told staff this. I've been telling them it for eight years. You need transparency. You gotta let more people know what you're doing. And they're not doing it, and we're the planning commission, and I wanna know why, okay? That's it. I mean, and, and when you have to have a police officer do that, to tell you to take a tree down, it should say, if the property owner thinks it's a hazard, the tree can come down. That's all there is to it.
One of the things, one of the things, staff can't do five different things based on what five different planning commissioners want them to do. So that's where you have to present an idea to the commission. The commission has to vote on it and get it approved by at least three-fifths majority. And then staff has been very responsive to do what we as commission have asked them to do. They can't just do what you want them to do. Well, that's fine. Then, that's fine. Then, then you and I and Rich, then you and I and Rich and Tiana can duke it out as commissioners. But I will not allow you to talk down and disparage our staff as a single member of the commission. That's not appropriate. They're working for us and the whole city, and berating them for what you think is their failing and shortcomings is simply not appropriate.
Well, Jeff, who's gonna tell them? I mean, it happens all the time.
If, if you would like to see greater outreach, I'm for that 100%. Rich has said the same thing. You can move and we can vote and we can instruct staff to do that. That's our commission's job. But they can't do what each individual planning commissioner wants them to do. So all I'm asking for the remainder of this meeting is that we keep our focus on the ordinance that's in front of us, that we not, you know, make negative derogatory comments about individual staff members or their efforts. Okay? That's all I'm asking. So we've got a motion on the floor to, to recommend rejecting this ordinance. Any other discussion about that motion? So it takes three of us to, to approve a motion. So, Kristen, if we could get the screen share turned off. I know you work so hard to get that on. So, so there's four of us here. No other comments on this particular motion to recommend not approval? I would like to say as a comment, I, I would really rather work with it, but I don't think, there doesn't seem to be a consensus. We would have to get three-fifths of a vote to do that. And I'm not seeing Rich and Joe being interested in doing that. So I will be voting to recommend a denial because I think that's much preferable to a approval.
Yeah, Jeff, I have a couple of comments. I'm not certain that, that as the chairman, you should tell how you're going to vote. You should be the last to vote, and I don't think you should tell people how to vote. You're going to vote. That's just my feeling. The other thing is, to chastise, I think that we... The other thing is, uh, to chastise, I think that we should be able to, like, we all like our staff. We have a great staff and they, they work hard, they do stuff, they're probably underpaid. Uh, but I think if we can't stand up at these meetings and say, we don't like what you're doing, uh, I think that, that Joe, you, all of us should be able to tell staff right out, we don't like the way you're, the way you're, you're presenting our thoughts to the city council. I've never had that feeling that I, I don't like what they're doing, but I don't think that we should be afraid to say, to speak our voice, to say, Kristen or, 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 or Shwan or anyone, we just don't like the, what you're doing and here's what we want done. And, and I have no proof, but according to Joe, he's been, years and it's not coming around. I, I think he, I think he'll have a voice this in public meetings.
I'm happy, I would refer, Rich, to have this discussion under reports and communications. Um, I'd rather just get this, uh, vote done and on this particular motion and then we can talk about that later. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I, I, I've just given you my feelings. I'm, I'm fine.
Oh yeah, I, I appreciate it. So all those in favor of recommending, uh, that city council, that this be denied?
I've got a final comment. I've actually got a final comment. Um, you know, and I just, since this seems to be such a hot topic and it seems like there's a lot to this, you know, I would recommend waiting till we have a full council to, um, Commissioner Mayor is also here to vote, because I think that this seems like a really important vote and especially with the way that everybody feels. That's just my recommendation is waiting to vote on this to reject it or not for any motions until we have a full council.
So we've got a motion to reject it. Um, and so unless the person that made the motion, Joe and Rich, want to withdraw it, there's no, we can't, there's no mechanism by which we can withdraw it. Joe, Rich, are y'all interested in following Tiana's idea and holding it over to the next meeting?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
I'm not.
So in that case, we'll vote on it. It requires a three fifth majority to, uh, approve the motion to deny approval, recommend that the city council not approve it. So all those in favor of the motion to, uh, recommend the city council that they not approve this ordinance as it's written, uh, say aye.
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 All those that are not in favor of recommending that the city council approve this, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So the motion does not carry. It's still on the table. Now, what are we gonna do with it? Tiana, would you like to move that we do what you just said?
Yes, I would like to move to wait until we have all of our commissioners here to, um, vote on this for recommendation.
About this, just for legal technical purposes, can we move that we, um, that we continue this particular item until our next regularly scheduled meeting, when hopefully we'll have five there?
Yeah.
Is that okay? I'll second that motion.
Well, wait. What, we could, we could, we could fix it so we never have a full meeting.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, that's, that's not good wording. We, we could just get together and say, we, we're never gonna do anything.
That's, that's why I recommended the change and Tiana went with it. So it's just continued until our next meeting is the motion. Regardless of how many people we have there, it'll be on the next agenda if we approve this motion. So Rich and Joe.
You, you got the same problem without notifying everybody.
Right.
Everybody, by killing this motion, you would be able to then have the staff notify everybody in the city who has a tree, that we're gonna change this ordinance. And that is the only way to do it that's fair and protects people's property rights.
I'm with you 100%.
Well, then we should deny this motion. I mean, that, otherwise we're just gonna have the same discussion in a month. This is not fair.
I, I, I hear, I hear your Commissioner Benino, I do, but when our staff is also saying that they notified people and they put something up on paper, again, it's like, you know, what Commissioner Reagan was saying, we can speak, you know, our disagreements on it for sure, but there is some level of like, if they're saying they did it, did they actually do it? So as far as notifying people and sending mail, like, I understand that that reaches more people, I get that. But at the same time, this seems like a very hot topic. I would like to table it until our next commission meeting, just to give it some more time to think about it and possibly have Commissioner Mayor weigh in on it as well. And if you know, if, if you feel the same way then and talk about it and she's not here and you know, it's, we're at this point, then you obviously have that same result of being able to put that on the table to reject it. So that's all I'm asking.
Yep. I would agree with that. Now, Joe and Rich, I'm telling you, I'm not voting to recommend this to the city council as it's written. I will not do that. I think it's overreach. So I mean, I agree with you guys on that. Uh, and Joe, I agree with you 100% that we need to have, I, I agree with you 100% that we need to have more effective outreach to the residents. Coronavirus, there's a lot going on that I think people, I think if citizens knew what we were proposing here, that they would be outraged, but I don't think killing this is the answer to that.
Why didn't you vote for my motion? That, then we could've, I understand why you voted no last time.
Because I think, it, it does in my mind, hear me out, let me explain it. If we kill it, then it, it just goes to the city council. It doesn't guarantee that we're gonna get any more public input in it. What I'm proposing is, what Tiana is proposing, and I agree with, is that we bring it up again next month. That gives us a month to get the word out. I, I hope that there's a reporter getting this video that's gonna say, wow, what a dust-up they had at the planning commission. Look at this, uh, controversial ordinance here and we can get more public input and then it'll give us a chance to, to, uh, identify the parts that we are, that we do like and get rid of the stuff we don't.
Well, I hope that the city notifies everybody in town because we can't rely on people reading the Time Standard. Nobody reads the Time Standard anymore and this is just totally inadequate. You know, I mean, here's an example, Jeff. I went down to the place there on Broadway, Crisp Place, whatever it was gonna be on Hawthorne. I talked to the owner of the property today. I said, hey, I'm on the planning commission and, uh, your property's gonna be up here for a, for a review by the planning commission today. He goes, I go, he goes, I didn't know that. I said, you didn't? You weren't notified? You're the owner of the property. So, you know,
You, you, you admit, you admit that there's a difference between someone telling someone something and someone understanding it and paying attention, right?
This guy's the owner of the property. They didn't even talk to him, tell him there was a meeting tonight.
Um, some
Come on, Jeff, this has been a problem.
I, 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 I'm
You have to admit it's been a problem.
I'm with you, I'm with you to get more, uh, I'm with you that we need to get more input, but I, I don't think you can, I don't think it's appropriate to blame staff for not, for people in the city that aren't necessarily aware of what's going on.
Who do you blame?
Yeah.
I think it's a variety, it's, it's a, a whole variety of things. I think coronavirus has got people tunneled up. I think we could do a better job.
Jeff, this goes back eight years.
Uh, I think we could do a better job of outreach, Joe, but I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that that's incumbent upon staff. So we've got a motion, we've got a motion to hold this over for a month. Um, so any other thoughts, comments on that particular motion?
Uh, I, I just have a personal question. What is the date of the next meeting?
Be the first, second Monday of November.
It's November 9th.
November 9th.
Well, I have it down, planning commission.
Excellent. Alright, so all those in favor of holding this over to the next regularly scheduled meeting, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
That's four. Anybody opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. So we're gonna hold this one over until the next month, meeting, um, and let's all take it upon ourselves to get this out, uh, through social media and through all of our different, uh, spheres and let's, uh, let's make sure we get the word out. Joe, do you have some specific requests that you would like to bring to the commission about how staff can better notice people?
Yeah, my, uh, thing is, like I said, Burger King sends out a, a ad every single month. What they should do is team up with Burger King, have them pay for the mailing, put a coupon at the bottom of the announcement and then send it out. Doesn't cost the city anything. Burger King gets them advertising or Denny's or whoever else wants to do it and you've notified everybody in the city. Takes no time at all. They've got all the addresses already in their computer. They just all get mailed out and everybody gets a notice and everybody knows, hey, your tree rights are threatened or you're gonna have cannabis there.
As a guy that does some advertising for a living, that, it doesn't sound, it sounds way more complicated to me than it might to you. Uh, Kristen, do you have any ideas on how we can get more, uh, does, does Joe's idea sound reasonable? Is that something you've done before or have an idea how to do? Or do you have some other ideas you wanna propose to us?
Yeah, I don't know what the ramification would be for the city, a public agency to team up with a local business to do advertising. Um, I'd need to run that by our legal staff.
Right.
Um, I mean, other than posting on our website and putting it in the newspaper and posting our agendas at the public locations, there's not a lot of, of other ways that we can necessarily get the word out. Um, in, in response to the property owner who said he didn't get the, the notice for tonight's meeting, we can't make people read their mail. So if we send them an envelope and it has a public hearing notice inside of it and they don't open it because it says city of Eureka, not a lot we can do about that. We had been sending postcards because that does make it easier to read, but because of COVID, we can't do that. We can't fit all of the COVID wording for the meetings on a postcard. So.
And that state law requires that?
Well, we need to tell people how they can participate in the meeting.
Right. Right. Commissioners, any other thoughts on how we can, um, you know, how we can get the word out?
Yeah, a couple of us or three of us, uh, get together and, and, and write an article and have it put at, put in the Losco's outpost, not outpost, any, yeah, yeah, Losco's outpost, North Coast outpost.
Alright, um, any other thoughts on this particular item before we move on?
Jeff and Joe could write a, a, a nice article on it.
Certainly Joe could.
Yeah.
I don't, I'll, I'm gonna make some Facebook posts. Um, we, we have no other public hearings, we have no old business or new business, reports in communication and, and Rich, you wanted a, a couple items you wanted to talk about. Any objections to moving to that?
Mr. Chairman, you actually do have new business.
What? What'd you say?
Oh. The cannabis code update. We do have new business.
We want
Cannabis code update. Go ahead.
We wanted to come to you tonight and give you a preview of a text amendment that's going to be coming to you probably at your next meeting. That's still a little bit up in the air, but, um, Swan Asbury is gonna, uh, give you an overview of what the changes are to the cannabis code and, um, our consultant, Ben Noble, is with us today too.
And I thought Swan was just here because she enjoyed our meeting.
That too.
Then that raises the question, why is Ben here?
Yeah. Go ahead, Swan. New cannabis code update.
Okay, can you guys see my screen and hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep. On both.
Good evening, Planning Commission Chair and Commissioners. Uh, tonight I am going to be giving you a brief report on some changes we're proposing to our cannabis code. The changes will be coming to you in the next month or two as a public hearing, um, but I wanted to explain our thinking behind them and the background before these changes, before they arrived in your packet. So there's nothing to vote on tonight, it's just a brief introduction to what we're talking about. Um, and as, as Kristen mentioned, Ben Noble is joining us. He was the consultant that did our zoning code update and he has been writing our cannabis code. So why are we making any changes? Um, things seem to be working well and they are, but we think they can make, we can make them better. Um, to start with, when we wrote our code in 2016, it was before the state came out with the regulations, so it was our best guess. And there's a lot we've figured out since then and we want our code to reflect that. Second, we want the code to, uh, align with our zoning code update. And third, this is a bold statement, we would like our cannabis code to be the best it can be so it can be used as an example in other cities. The state follows what a local jurisdiction does, so if a city chooses not to allow cannabis or manages it poorly, it completely affects the industry. Last year I went to the League of California Cities Conference where cities from all over the state gathered and I attended the cannabis session and it was a room full of cities that didn't know what to do or where to start. We would like our cannabis code to be as excellent as possible so that other cities could use it as an example. So since starting our program, there's some things that, um, have been working really well for us and that includes our process. So first of all, we have a specific cannabis planner that Shepherd's Projects through and is the glue between all the different departments. We have a concise application with checklists and examples of what we want so we can gather the right information to make decisions. And it's important to mention that this application includes security criteria developed by our police department that is based on the volume of cannabis a business will have. So let's say cannabis will have thousands of pounds of cannabis, their security requirements are different from a testing lab that will only have a small amount of cannabis. After an application is deemed complete, it's sent out for referral and then it's taken to our cannabis review panel. I think our cannabis review panel is the secret sauce for our program's success in Eureka. It's a team that's been together since the beginning. We meet weekly or every other week and we review every application together and go on every inspection together. This team includes Captain Stevens from the Eureka Police Department, Brian Gerving, our Public Works Director, Billy Reynolds and Amy Comland from Humboldt Bay Fire and Matt Morgan from Code Enforcement. The cannabis planner is the organizer and schedules what's being reviewed and where the inspections are happening, but since 2016, this team has helped our cannabis program be successful. Also, I've asked Captain Stevens and Brian Gerving to come to the planning commission meeting when we bring the draft code before you in case you have any specific questions for them. Although we're proposing changes to our cannabis code, our process that is working well will not change. The changes that are proposed are changes that the cannabis review panel have talked through and agreed on. We feel like we've figured out priorities and the proposed drafted code reflects those changes. So I've talked about what's worked, but now I wanna talk about what we think we can improve. There are three major changes in the draft cannabis code that will be coming to you. The first is going from 11 license types to three. The second is the addition of cannabis events and the third is the addition of more enforcement tiers. I'm gonna start with the changes to our license types. This is the big picture view. When the draft comes before you, we'll go into way more depth, but what we've figured out about cannabis license types is that there are uses that need more attention and there are uses that do not. So the proposed cannabis license types, the first one is a general cannabis license and that'll include cultivation, distribution, non-chemical extraction, research and development and testing. The second will be a chemical cannabis extraction license and the third will be a cannabis retail license. If you are extracting using chemical solvent, we wanna pay close attention. If you are selling cannabis, we wanna also pay close attention. However, if you are cultivating, distributing, testing, manufacturing without chemicals, as long as you have security in place based on the volume of the product and you do not have odor, we're not as concerned as say chemical extraction.
Swan, if I may interrupt, I'm surprised that research and development and testing Swan, if I may interrupt, I'm surprised that research and development and testing, because those do use chemical processes and could use more, um, I don't know, combust, combustive types of processes and, and uh, elements. Why wouldn't those be included with the chemical cannabis license?
That's a good question. They don't use as much of this chemical. And what we've realized is that the building code really addresses these issues. So with volatile or non-volatile, it's really the volume of the chemicals that you're using that triggers different occupancies. So you could have a small amount of volatile stuff and it's not scary. If you start getting into high quantities, that'll trigger an H occupancy, which is a whole new ballgame. So there's, there's other things that catch issues like that. To me, those uses aren't scary because you're not gonna blow up. I don't think you're gonna blow up. You're not gonna have enough chemicals there to blow up and our building code will catch you. And I don't think the other uses that you're gonna blow up, but we're gonna keep an eye on you to make sure. I was probably being weight-handed, but it, I'm being honest.
Nope, nope, there you go. That makes sense. Um.
Okay.
More, more to the presentation?
Yes. Okay, um. So I want to give you a quick example. A licensed cultivator recently called and said they wanted to add a metal table for processing and for his wife to be able to drive their product. That meant adding a non-volatile manufacturing license and a distribution license and modifying our coastal development permit. So our team went to do a pre-site. From the outside, everything will stay the same. You won't know that any changes have been made. The security will stay the same because the volume of product is the same. The odor control will stay the same. From a program perspective, these aren't uses that make us worry. And yet we're standing there with hundreds of dollars of staff time and an expensive and lengthy process for the business owner. Instead of them having three licenses, cultivation, non-volatile manufacturing and distribution, they could have one general cannabis license. I have a lot of examples like this and I'll go into more detail when the draft code comes before you. But this is the gist behind going from 11, 11 license types to three license types.
Okay.
I think I might have frozen.
Uh-oh. Maybe Ben can grab the guitar behind him and play us a song for the intermission.
I'm gonna keep talking, but my, my slides won't keep up.
Okay.
Okay, the second big change is the addition of cannabis events. This is something that the industry has asked us for and we'd like to establish structure for these events. When the draft code comes before you, we will talk about where temporary cannabis, cannabis events should be allowed, if they should be allowed, what approvals should be required, what type of event permit should be required, and what the event standard should be. The third change are additions to the enforcement and penalty section. Currently, if there's an issue, our main option is to revoke a license, which puts someone out of business. So we're very hesitant to do that. Our drafted enforcement section includes a list of available actions and remedies. So we have more tools to work with to bring a business back into compliance. So that's it. I know that's a lot to digest in a short presentation and probably stirs up a lot of questions. But I just wanted to introduce the topic to you and explain why we're going about this and have it on your radar so that when it comes, it's something that you've been able to think about and it's not just, we're not just diving in. That's it for my presentation tonight.
Excellent. Any questions for Swan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Swan.
Ben, you haven't said a single word.
That's great.
Yeah.
I don't know that I'm able to stop sharing my screen.
Well, we can't see it anyway, so, yeah. Your screen has disappeared.
Okay, well, I'll stop talking then.
Okay. Without uh, any objections to moving on to reports and communications?
Nope.
Thank you, Swan. Great, great report. All right, so let's uh, Rich, you were talking about voicing, voicing our opinions to staff. You graciously let me cut you off and move it to this part of the meeting. Pray, continue.
Jeff, just for the record, I have never graciously let you cut me off.
Graciously, yes.
I just, I just think that uh, uh, that we should have the, uh, the, the opportunity to, to tell staff that we're not, we're not happy with what they're doing. I, I, I have no example of that. Uh, Joe has a, a strong feeling on it. But I, I don't think that we should hold back. Again, I think it's the open transparency to, 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 to tell staff, you know, we need more help from you or, or we need you to, to listen to us and, 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 and take our, take our, our, our opinions to the city council. I, I have nothing specifically. I love the staff. But I don't think you should chastise any of us to say, we, we have the freedom to speak up and say, we just don't like what you're doing. I don't like that.
Do you think there's a difference between an individual person on the commission?
What was the guy on the, uh, on the, uh, on, on the county planning commission that did that or, or the, the guy here that was on our commission before, way before us? Like what staff was doing.
Do, do you see a difference between one person, one member, one commissioner chastising staff and the commission voting to chastise staff?
Yes.
See, me too. And that's my point, is that if, as a commission, if three fifths of us, if a majority of us think staff has done something inappropriate, then I think it, it is appropriate for the commission to vote and for the majority to say, we don't like what you did here. We asked for this, you did that. But the, the, the problem I have is if there's five commissioners and each individual commissioner goes to staff and one says, I want it to be blue, and one says, I want it to be pink, and one says, orange, right? Then that puts staff in an impossible position. That's what I object to.
Well.
No, it doesn't, Jeff.
Your question to me was, do I?
Joe, Joe, you've, you've, you haven't spoken yet. Joe, go.
I'm not chastising them, Jeff. I'm just telling them the way it is, okay?
Right. I was just using, I was using Rich's language.
And so, but the point is, yeah, so it's not cha, it's just saying, that's what it is. I mean, we're not potted plants here on the planning commission. When we say something, we expect staff to, to carry it out. Instead, staff is just running to the council and reversing everything we do, okay? That is not the way it's supposed to work and it's not chastising it. And for one person to say it, it has to be that way. Because of the Brown Act, Jeff, you can't get three people together on the planning commission to say the same thing to staff all at once, ahead of the meeting. It has to be said during the meeting. You understand? And it has to start from one person. That's, that's, you know, that, that's just the way it works. Because of the Brown Act, we can't get together to do what you said and, well, three fifths of us think that you shouldn't do this. We can't get together like that. It has to be brought up in open meeting, open hearing, and somebody has to say it first.
Right. And, and the person that says it, you're right. Brown Act says we can't get together outside of a, a meeting. We shouldn't. This should be done in a meeting. You're right. One person has to say it first and that person should make a motion.
No, 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 no. You don't have to make a motion to say that, Jeff. It, that's what part of our, our being up here during the Brown, under the Brown Act is, we're supposed to have a discussion. We don't have to have a motion to be talking. It's just as if we were talking down on the street, only it's in a, it's within the hearing.
But your discussion as a member of the commission is with other commissioners. It is inappropriate for any one of us to presume to direct staff to do anything. Any one of us individually, we have no power. It's only as a majority that we have any authority to request or direct staff to do anything.
Well, I understand that, but that's my opinion to give them what I want them to do and we have to do it in open meeting during the, the hearing. We, and it, and it doesn't have to have a motion to talk about it. That's the only time we can get together according to the Brown Act is at these meetings and it has to be, so somebody has to say it.
It has to be at a meeting. There, I, I would refer you, so you and I need to get together with the rules.
No, we can't because of the Brown Act. We have to talk about it now.
You and I, you, the two of us can get together and we can discuss it, uh, the rules of.
No, that's not the Brown Act. You can't do that. No, you have to do it in the open meeting. That's what the Brown Act is about. We can't talk together outside the Brown, outside the meeting.
Two people, a majority cannot. A minority can. Two people can.
No, no, that's not right. That is not correct.
I think we probably need to have our city attorney at our next meeting to answer some of these questions that we have. Kristen, can you arrange for that?
I can ask them, yes. But I can, I can also confirm for you that yes, two of you can get together and talk with each other. However, one of you cannot then go to a third person. That violates the Brown Act. But as long as it's just two of you having a discussion, you can do that.
What, what let's do, uh, um, if, if without objection from any other commissioners, let's add an item to our next agenda where we review the rules from the city council about how we operate and the decorum that are required and where we can ask city, the, uh, our attorney legally, what are the requirements for, um, discussing issues like this? Does anyone object to adding that to our next meeting?
Well, that's fine with me, but Jeff, I don't agree with that. Okay?
You don't agree with what?
That's not the, that's not the spirit of the Brown Act. Two should not even be getting together, okay? The spirit of the Brown Act is nothing is said about anything unless it's at this public meeting. And that's my feeling. It might not, I technically be okay for the two of us to talk about it, but I don't feel that's right.
I admire.
I, I think we've gone off.
I mean, what, why not have it at a public setting? Why not just do it right now?
Let's, let's, Rich, you go ahead.
I think we've, we've strayed from the point here. Uh, a, a, and I feel like the question you asked me, uh, it, should it be one or three to talk to, to the staff? I, I think we've got off the point, uh, of, of what we were, of what we were talking. And that is, I think that if I feel like I want to tell Kristen, I don't like the way you guys are representing us, I should be able to do that freely without hurting feelings at a meeting. I, and that's it. That's it. I don't have to have a, any, a, I don't have to have a majority. I don't have to have a discussion between anyone. I can just say, I don't like the way we're doing this. We're trying to get to the city and you're not helping us.
You and I disagree with that. And so what I'm proposing is that we discuss it in light of our, uh, rules that we're legally bound to run by and in light of legal advice from city attorney. You and I disagree with, on that point.
Well, what?
We disagree. That's great.
Wait, Tiana, Tiana hasn't said much. You have anything you want to contribute to this discussion?
I mean, honestly, gentlemen, I, I think that like whenever you're operating, regardless if you agree with somebody or disagree, obviously like our purview is to follow the rules and follow the laws that are set for us. So I'm excited about having our city attorney the next time, just to be very clear on those rules. But just best in class. If you disagree with something, best in class, like you can state, you know, your, your, your line in the sand, whatever that is. But in, you know, Commissioner Reagan, I agree, like, you don't ever want to make it seem like you're berating, you know, people who are on our team, like staff is on our team. We are all in this together to push things forward for progress of our city and for the people that, you know, we live among with. So all I say is act best in class, regardless if you agree or disagree. And I'm excited to, you know, um, get a refresher on, you know, what the legalities are because when passion is there, sometimes that's really hard when you feel really passionately about something and not to, you know, let that passion override, you know, the task at hand. So, just my thoughts.
Well said. Any other thoughts, comments on this item?
Nope.
All right. Uh, we're still in the reports and communications section. Kristen, do you have any reports and communications for us?
Wanted to give you an update on our department organization.
So glad. That was, that was on my list to ask you.
Since our last meeting in August, we've had another reorganization, uh, with, following the departure of Rob De Michele. Um, so the Development Services Department had been under the Public Works Department for a very brief period of time after Rob De Michele left. And then, um, the interim city manager, Miles Slattery, decided that Development Services was going to become its own standalone department again and that it would consist of a planning division and a building division. So at this point in time, um, the planning division is managed by myself. I report directly to the city manager, interim city manager. And we are almost through the process of hiring a new building official. And once the building official comes on board, then the building department or the building division will come out of public works and come under Development Services. The building official will manage the building staff and he will report directly to the city manager also. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So in other words, you're head of planning?
I'm.
Is that correct?
I'm the manager of the planning division, yes.
That's good. Thank you.
That's what we wanted for years.
Yeah.
I still have a higher boss though that I have to answer to.
Who is that? Who's the higher boss?
Miles, Miles Slattery, the interim city manager.
And, and what happened to the guy that was temporarily in charge of both divisions?
Rob De Michele?
No. Uh, okay, so, the guy that, that got involved in the, in the water tower.
So who, who, who's involved with Development Services?
Brian, Brian Gerving is a city engineer.
Brian Gerving is actually the director of Public Works. He is the one who is over the building department right now. Um, and again, building will come out from under his purview and come over to Development Services.
So there's no head of Development Services anymore?
Miles is the ultimate head. There is no director of Development Services. That position is vacant and frozen at this point in time. So my level is like a, a deputy level, um, kind of thing, once removed.
Okay. And I thought they made Miles the permanent, uh, manager, city manager.
Miles is interim city manager, I believe until February of next year.
Okay.
And I don't know what's gonna happen in February, but we'll find out when you find out.
Oh, well, thank you.
And I heard that Rob is in Alaska now managing a small city.
He is. He took a position as the city manager in Homer, Alaska.
Wow.
At the end of the road?
Yes.
That's funny.
All right, any other, any other?
Days after he accepted the position, that one.
Yeah, yeah, leave, leave the light on for him. Okay.
Uh, any other staff, uh, changes or organization stuff you want to tell us, Kristen?
I have nothing else unless anybody has any questions.
Anybody a question? Uh, any other reports and communications? All right, next item on our agenda is adjournments. Any objection to adjournment?
Nope.
None. I smell dinner, uh, so we are officially adjourned. Thank everyone for your attendance and we'll see you next month.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, everyone.
What is this top number on our screen?
What is what?
I, I have a telephone number on my screen all the time. You guys don't have a telephone number on your screen? A picture of a telephone?
Yeah, if you don't have your, um, video turned on, then it oftentimes looks like the little, the picture with the telephone in it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Good meeting tonight.
You bet.
Yeah, thank you. See you later. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.